Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this more meeting to an end. Would everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You didn't start us off, though.
Yes.
I would have been hesitant.
I'm having our time tonight. Uh, roll call, Mrs. Dawson, please.
Mayor Report.
Here.
Trusty Connor.
Here.
Trusty Short.
Here.
Trusty Forrier.
Here.
Trusty Forte, Sullivan.
Yeah.
We've been having trouble with that.
Yeah.
Uh, believe before all board members, we have the minutes of our last board meeting. Would there be any additions or corrections to these minutes? And if not, could I get a motion to have them accepted? Motion by Trusty Connor?
Second.
Second by Trusty Short? All in favor?
Standing.
Thank you. We usually open the meeting to the general public. Since there doesn't seem to be anyone here from the general public this evening, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I would like to make my appointment official this evening at this board meeting. I would like to appoint Joseph Webb as our new superintendent of Public Works at the Village of Champlain at an annual salary of forty-one thousand dollars a year. Joe will be working with Superintendent Sullivan the period through this month to follow up on what is happening in the village and get some training as well as learning what we do in this village. And at this time, I would like to thank Joe for taking the job. Wish him the best. And during your tenure, we will be speaking.
What question did he take the code to or no code enforcement?
Right, he is going to be taking the code enforcement as well. Uh, we believe that works hand in hand. We are now looking at getting a school started because I guess it's two hundred contact hours. Uh, but I'm sure that we can do it in increments as we need to go a week at a time or what have you to get into this. But yes, I greatly believe that that in the village needs to work hand in hand with the superintendent. And that also will be his other job in the village. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm honored. Thank you. Well, maybe it's better to keep me a mystery.
As you know, after saying that and appointing Mr. Webb to the position, this is going to be Bob's last meeting. So if we need to do any digs to get him, this is the one to do it at. And on a more sober note, stating that, I have a letter from Superintendent Sullivan dated the first of this month regarding resignation due to retirement. This memo is to formally resign from my positions as Officer of the Village of Champlain effective December thirty-first, two thousand and three. And go on to read. It has been my pleasure to serve with three mayors and many different trustees over these past eleven and a half years. I think this village has made great strides ahead during this time. It certainly has not been exactly a smooth road to travel. With the solid backing of all officials as well as the staff and the Department of Public Works crew, without whom nothing could be accomplished, we have persevered through numerous floods, some pretty good snowstorms, and the ice storm of ninety-eight. This village as a whole has shown fortitude and cooperation, caring and woe-iness to work together. One can only hope that this attitude prevails through the coming years. The village stands on the brink of some new development that should bring prosperity to all of the residents. Continued physical responsibility and careful planning are essential ingredients to this success. We must have dreams and put these dreams to a practical plan without losing sight of the final objective. When I first started as superintendent, then Mayor Agor was distressed that a lot of the local youngsters had to move away to find work, that they could not successfully, successfully act.
It could be successful.
Could be successful, excuse me, thank you. As well as making a living wage. That has been the foundation of past endeavors. I firmly believe young people finding work, staying near family and friends, and contributing to this community has been and should continue to be this village's objective. Please continue to support the plan in that field part and follow it with diverse businesses so that the village and the residents are not held hostage to a single large employer. Continue to be proactive with regards to our environment. Look at development standards that are in place for the park and continue to use these guidelines for future development. Lastly, please give your new superintendent the same cooperation that I have received. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the Village of Champlain. Robert Sullivan. I believe I need a motion to accept this resignation and a second.
So with regrets?
Motion, Trusty Connor?
Second with regrets.
Second, Trusty Forrier? All in favor? Robert? You're going to be missed, okay? You're going to be missed.
Thank you.
And on a further note this evening, we have another letter of resignation that has to be read. Uh, to the Board of Trustees from Steve Bowen. Letter of resignation. I am resigning as employee and chief operator of the wastewater treatment plant effective fifteenth December, two thousand and three. I would like to express my gratitude to the Board of Trustees for their support during my tenure. Steve is moving on to a job that I think that he really and truly will give a hundred and ten percent like he had down at our wastewater treatment plant. I think the county is going to get a valuable person. I need a motion and a second to this resignation, please. Motion, Trusty Short?
Second.
Second, Trusty Forrier? All in favor?
Aye.
He's going to be doing one. On a happier note, for the people out in our community, as years, this year as years pass, we are going to be having a lighting contest in the Village of Champlain. And I believe it's majorly sponsored by New York State Electric and Gas with prizes to be awarded, which I do believe come off of their electric usage bill. Right. The judging of those light contests this year will be between twelve sixteen and twelve eighteen. The winners, I will believe, will be notified. They should know before our January meeting. Am I right, Mrs. Dawson?
Sure.
So everybody, make it pretty.
Who judges? Who judges?
We have two people in the village that judge, okay?
I just care, I won last year, I didn't even know there was a contest.
Right.
My neighbors all told me I won, I didn't even know I won.
Yeah, we have two people that go around and judge and they do it on their own time. So I think it's really nice of the people that do that.
Who is that, Albert? Huh? Who is it?
Yeah, the two people sitting right there.
You said you didn't know. That's why I asked, and he said, "I don't know."
Well, that's why they didn't want that done.
Why don't you tell me that? I would have.
Yeah. I could have told you, I will tell you later. We have had discussions, we have had discussions on our closure of our elementary school and the speed limit signs that have been still in place up there. I myself have talked to the superintendent, Mr. Hebert. I asked if we could bag him, and by law, we couldn't bag him. Apparently not knowing what the future of that school is, which is not a school anymore, we got with the attorney, and we are going to put a local law in effect. We're going to be setting up a public hearing for January's meeting on this local law, which will be January twelfth at seven o'clock at the village office. In the local laws, two men's section one-one-one dash thirty-nine of the Vehicles and Traffic Law, chapter one-one-one of the Village Code. Provision of this section which sets the speed limit on Elm Street from Prospect Street to Walnut Street is deleted in its entirety. The other provision is since in this section's three dash thirty-nine remain in effect. There's been some talk of school zones. If you're ticketed for a school zone, the fines are a lot more severe since it is not a school anymore. We would like to keep that whole straight thirty miles an hour through Elm Street. So this initially is what this local law is going to be for. Okay. Could I get a motion and a second to have a public hearing in January? Motion, Trusty Forrier? Second, Trusty Connor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. One more thing for me this evening. I would like to call for an executive session before the end of our regular session to go into a personnel issue.
Make motion.
Motion to go into executive session by Trusty Connor?
Second.
Second, Trusty Forrier? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I think that'll be it for me this evening. We will have things in our correspondence as well. Okay, on to reports of the trustee. Trusty Connor?
Well, I really have much as far as individual items. I just want to welcome Mr. Webb as our new superintendent of Public Works and wish him well. And wish Mr. Sullivan well in his retirement. I go back a long time with Bob since he was hired initially here. We've seen many, many a time together as far as names in all of the village. So, keep in touch. That's all I have now.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Trusty Short?
Um, the only thing I got is my term is up in March, and I won't be running for my fourth term.
You won't be running?
I won't. My chair will be open.
Your chair will be open.
Anybody out there who'd like to run? They're not, they don't have to run against me.
Well, thank you, Trusty Short. Is that it for this evening?
That's all I have.
Trusty Garrett?
The only thing I have is to wish Bob the best. He was one of the first people that we met when we moved into Champlain almost eleven years ago. When I did my first load of wash, it was all brown, and I said, "What is this water?" So you will be sorely missed. Good luck in your retirement, enjoy it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Trusty Forrier?
Couple things, I guess I'm going to start off with welcome aboard to our new superintendent, Joe Webb.
Thank you.
And again, Bob, I wish you the best in retirement. I'm not happy about seeing you leave. You know? The short time we spent while I was on the board, but obviously many more times before I was a trustee, were very knowledgeable in the whole thing. So I, I mean, like I say, I'm glad you're retiring. I'm happy about it, but I hate to see you do it. Also, I've got a resident over on Moore Street. I don't recall his name, but I got a call in the evening about a main being blocked. Ran into him again today. He seemed to be very frustrated about it. I told him I would bring it up at the board meeting. He seems to indicate this happens once a year. It's, from his knowledge of it, it's another resident between him and the next manhole or something. I'm not sure of all the facts on that. But I did tell him I'd bring it up. Open for ears, hopefully he'll be watching this and we can shed a little light on it to calm him down. He said it's happened twice, he's so discouraged. I guess when we do sewer jet, it backs up into his line and he has to clean his lateral as well. So I guess I'm open all ears, not only for myself, so if I do see him or if he is watching, he can see that we are concerned and that he's not left out in the cold here.
So in other words, what happened is our main is actually getting blocked?
From what I understand, and I don't really have good hard facts, and that's why I brought it to the meeting to see, maybe get some insight.
I haven't had a lot of conversations about this particular situation, so I don't know.
You heard about the meeting?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. And I guess it's the second time, like seven months ago, from what the resident said. I don't know that for fact, you know? He was very irate, I mean, he was upset, he was concerned. He lost ten hours, he lost ten hours of employment, plus he had to clean his lines, and this is the second time it's happened. And he wants to know what we're going to do about it or what we could do about it or any kind of preventive maintenance. Um, I did tell him I'd bring it to the board, try to get some insight on it. I did tell him that we are concerned. And if there's any preventive maintenance, I'd fight out from the superintendent to see if it's something we could put on a calendar to go and inspect it after so many months, if that's what's required.
I don't remember giving him a look, I just don't remember a previous appearance on.
I guess Larry was there the time before, because he had mentioned Larry's name and that Larry had came back again to cure the situation on the main.
I just don't know why that's not going to help.
Somewhere's between the end of Moore Street.
If they don't call me, which they, I never got any, any one of those calls. So I have no way.
Of documenting.
Of documenting, I didn't know him.
I got a call for pulling a manhole cover.
Right. That's the same, I don't remember the guy's name. He works for Bordeaux Brother Feed. I got the same call, same night. I told him I would let him know in the morning. Matter of fact, the next morning, Larry was already aware of it. So I'm not sure if he called Larry.
See, that's what, and if they do that.
But I told Larry about it, and I'm not sure, maybe Larry already knew because he was geared up for it.
I knew the, I knew the call came in, I got that, that particular one. But as far as, I didn't answer it. You know, he made contact some other way.
On his, what, do they, do the, don't the men normally log in? They worked at the wastewater plant or streets or where, did he log that in?
No.
Wasn't logged in? You know, I'm just saying that to keep a track of this because.
He told me.
And I know Larry told me that he was there.
See, usually what happens with something like that, usually in my past experience when we have problems with a sewer, it's usually a grease-related incident.
This happened to be, and this is based on Larry, and it concurred with the resident. They both seemed to come up with the same things, a paper towel issue. And a lot of the first.
I remember something said about that.
The first time was paper towel, and the second time around, that morning when I mentioned to Larry, he was already abreast of it. So I don't know, he got the call, but he was geared up to take care of that. And he seemed to indicate the same thing, and chances are it's a paper towel again due to whatever circumstances of where they're coming from, like, I can't say.
Well, I think, you know, without, without doing any investigation, we can't really make any comment on it. But no, that is, that is an issue that will be addressed. Yeah, definitely.
I think that's the meaning, I told him I would bring it up, and I'm sure as a board we can say that, maybe we can flag a calendar or something and do a spot check in five months from now before the sixth, seventh month period comes up. Pop a manhole and just see what's more.
Because if that's happening, then we're not going to get a run through our main. If that's plugging up, we won't have a run through our main, we can go down and find it.
The other, the other thing is, is it two, are there two laterals happening to be and going into the same?
Yes. From what I understand, there's a lateral from another resident that seems to be the issue, but I can't.
But do they go together before they reach the main? That's what I don't know either.
That I don't know. I don't believe it because when you lift one manhole, it's full and the other one is nothing.
Is not full.
Right. So in the direction of flow, that would indicate the main is blocked, not the lateral. Not the lateral.
I know we had a problem there a long, long time ago. But anything seven months ago, I just don't remember.
He said last year, he said, now, this is all, I mean, the guy was a little concerned and not really calm. You know, this happened last year, matter of fact, it was seven, eight months ago. And okay, you know, no problem. Can you get by tonight? Because in the morning, I'm going to be there and I'll talk to the guys. And when I did get here, Larry was already aware of it. So maybe, because I think he called you that night, called me that night, and he may have called Larry, I don't know. And Larry did concur that paper towels seem to be an issue.
Remember that conversation, that part?
Where they're coming from, we don't really know.
Did we go up the upstream and put the sewer jet in? But we need to correct the problem.
So I guess, I mean, with a irate, concerned citizen, can we probably make a note of that for, well, actually Superintendent Webb to flag his calendar or mark his calendar?
Right.
To do a little investigation, find out.
I think we need to do a little investigation upfront on this.
Yes, sir. Well, I would think if it's paper towels continually, somebody's putting those down. They shouldn't be.
Making it down their lateral, but our main doesn't carry it because of the mass of it, apparently. Because that's the only way to block up. If it comes through a lateral, why isn't it going through a main?
Well, I was just going to say, because it's probably not enough flow. Because our main is bigger than their lateral.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying. So it's not, it's accumulation of towels.
We have, we have, we may have, we may have a problem in that sewer line as well.
Well, or we may have a problem being the paper towels and of course the main, that minimal pitch. What we should do is confirm with Larry, and what did he find this time? Was he able to confirm what it is?
He said paper, I remember that. I remember him saying paper towels. Brown paper towels.
You should not be putting those down the toilet.
No.
But it's not one who called, he assumed that somebody else.
I agree.
And I just wanted to let him know that.
Those aren't, like I said, those aren't the type of things to put down.
No.
We had that same situation happen up on, on Middle Lane. And there was a business up there that the owner of the business couldn't understand why they were doing it, but to some reason, that doesn't happen anymore. I think that.
Must fill the toilet paper rolls in, you know?
Well, yeah, it wasn't.
Find a lot of strange stuff in mains.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we're going to go into an investigation on this. I think I, myself, before what we are going to look into it, I'd like to know who we're speaking with and who we're speaking about.
Maybe we can get a little more facts on it too. Because like I say, I'm speaking just from what I heard and whatever. But maybe by talking to Larry, taking a drive up there, looking at the manholes, maybe get a little more facts and.
Yeah, I've plugged, I've plugged main, it's not good.
No. Okay.
Okay.
Another question, Christmas lights on these poles. From what I understand, we have a certain amount of poles that are equipped and some that are not.
Mm-hmm.
Some due to the fact that we are not allowed to equip them because of whatever's on them, and some because we have never had the time or finances to equip them.
Yeah.
So we make, we need to make our own boxes, I think.
Right. What I would like to know or find out from, and I keep looking at Bob, and I guess it's going to be.
Well, we'll discuss it.
Right, there you go.
The main between us, we're not.
Right, because you have the history. And then I'm trying to cross these bridges before it's too late and have to start calling North Carolina, you know? Like, "Bob, what's going on?" Uh, what, my questions are, how many are there that are up now? Where are they? How many more do we need to equip it to maximum capacity?
What do you mean maximum capacity?
Whatever pole is available that we can actually equip it to be that way? And our costs and procedure for doing this?
Okay, we have a few ornaments that we didn't even put up. The cost of the boxes, I think around, by the time you get done, a hundred bucks or so. All we did last year, all right. So twenty, fifty bucks.
How many approximately do we have up now? Whatever's out there now is what we have out? Or is there room for more?
Well, there's room for more.
No, no, I mean, no, no, what I'm saying is, is there room, meaning we have the receptacle, we just don't have the.
No, we don't have the receptacle.
Okay, so every ornament that's up would tell me that that pole is equipped. There's not a pole out there that doesn't have something hanging on it, but is equipped?
Correct. Oh, yeah, we have, we have ornaments that.
That could be put up?
That could be put up. Not many, but we do. Give you a solid number, I can't see that.
That's okay, no. I'm just looking to get a guideline here of what's going on. So who would be the authority on that? Would that be nicer to say yes or no to each pole?
Yes. When we go putting them up, you have to be so high off the ground. There's a minimum height. Uh, sometimes it's because the telephone company or somebody else has something that occupies that space that you can use.
So who's the authority on that? Would that be nicer, Dave Daley?
Yes. It's Daley.
Dave Daley?
Yeah, he's the one who tells us where we.
So if, if, if I took the time and got ahold of David and we did a walkthrough and I took a count of them, then we could go from there and determine.
Someplace we've got a list of places that we can put.
Oh, that's already been done?
Yeah.
If it's possible, if I could get a copy of that, I just, just to do in my free time, you know? I just want to look at.
You're getting the Christmas ornament business.
No, I'm not. I just, I just, my own opinion and, and not to make light of it, is that there's some areas that are a little too thin.
Yeah.
And it kind of discredits you, be better with none as to put one, two.
Well, Main Street is one of them.
Well, but anyways, not, not to get into detail, I just, for what it's going to cost, that's what I need to know. Is this, is this pursuable? What is available? Is it only because there's certain poles are available? I don't know. I want to just get some information on that and I'll go from there. I'll bring it to the board and say, "Hey, this is a deal," or whatever.
We normally, and we don't put them on a light, on a pole that has a light on it already because that steals strength.
Unless we go with red or blue or green.
Still, when you put them on there, you just don't see them. It's not the same.
But anyways, if we, if we can do that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I know we did several new boxes last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, we put four.
We can buy number boxes with the number of ornaments that we have those. Usually if I have them after the first of the year, it goes to buy two and everything free.
Will we buy ornaments? Will we buy ornaments every year?
Well, we buy three or four, three or four, three or four.
Every year.
Well, the past few years.
So what did, what did we have prior to these ornaments, these are fairly new, I think.
Yeah, these are, the ones that were up there before, a lot of them got heavily damaged during the ice storm.
Okay.
So they didn't come down, we lost a lot of stuff during that.
Do we have insurance for that, the insurance? Oh, we did, is that what replaced what we've got?
We did replace some.
So there's, there's funds available for this?
Not now.
Well, you said we received money for the damaged ornaments, but we haven't used them.
Oh, yeah, we put that towards the insurance, we bought ninety-eight.
Okay, ninety-eight, the money we received from the insurance, we bought what we have out there now, that's what we got with the insurance.
Plus, we bought some plus, we bought some more.
We bought more, where are they? You've gotten cents.
Yeah.
That's what we bought three of.
Yeah, three or four.
So, my point is, what we see out there now is not even what the insurance covered, because we've had to keep investing in this every two to three years.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
But we're adding to what's there.
Yeah, there's only lack of more ornaments, and we don't have any insurance to buy sitting anywhere.
That's, okay, that's, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm trying not to make this too complicated, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
For what I see out there.
It's smart.
Is whatever we collected off the ice storm insurance to replace what we had, plus we've been taking out of our pocket and adding to it.
That's correct, now you got it right, now you got it right.
That's correct, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we usually try to buy them after the first three years we can get.
You can get it better.
So we have, we have some here that aren't able to be put up because of lack of boxes?
Because we didn't, yeah, we didn't get boxes for them.
How many did they?
Have they decent?
Nothing big.
Huh?
Are they decent ones?
They're not.
Yeah, there's a sole flick that was in the back that's not up.
Right.
Um, I guess that covers that, didn't mean to make this so complicated, I just, if we can all get on the same page on what's going on, it makes it a lot easier to pursue something and, and make it more attractive or decorative or whatever. Um, my other question, and, and I guess, well, I guess that comes last. A Christmas party, um, from what I understand, the village doesn't allow funds for this, village party, a Christmas party? Is there any, and I know there's been some in the past, is there any intentions or plans for this?
January second.
January second, okay.
January second, we're gonna have a Christmas party.
So, so we'll be notified, okay? I mean, that's why I'm asking, I haven't heard anything, and I'm like.
You will be notified, uh, we tried to put one up sooner, but everybody's booked, and like the pepper quarters closed now, but.
They still take reservations?
Yeah, we tried to, we tried to make that, so we're, we're gonna have our holiday, it's gonna be our holiday.
It's going to be, because I, my concern is, from what I understand, and I wasn't a trustee last year, but.
First one we've missed.
We've missed one, and I just wanted to address it to see, are we gonna miss another one, or is there something I can do, or anybody can do to help make this happen?
No, it's in place, you will be given the information.
Over the years, it's varied from what type of a party they've had, it's, sometimes it was like a, a hot look dinner kind of thing, where people brought things in. And other times it was funds that were scrap metal and stuff like that was turned in, and money was received, and that went towards.
Scrap metal and stuff.
That, that would all be dependent upon what's available, and that's why I was getting at, is there something, is something planned, is there funds available? We are on the right track, we're going, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Just so they don't get biased and say, it was a per year.
This year, you're gonna pay for it, so.
Yeah, so that's why we, we made it later, more expensive, okay? Y'all, your information, I would have thought that that would have been in the boxes by now that.
I just happened to think of it, it's. Um, I've got a couple more things that's on the, on the vouchers, but I guess that'll come towards main bills normally, or, or does that come now, does it matter? Um.
Bulbs.
Is that what that is, Christmas?
Just bulbs.
Just bulbs.
Put a hundred and fifty bulbs. One twenty-five or a hundred and fifty. Yeah.
Um, Champlain Telephone Company, do we, are these monthly bills or by monthly?
Monthly.
Every month. And we have justice court, clerk's office, garage. I just wanna make sure I got this right, because man, there's a lot of holes.
Mm-hmm. You have one for the telemetry at the tank, that's seven bucks.
Tank alarm, water plant.
You got one, water plant, wastewater plant.
You got lift station, wastewater treatment.
Yeah.
And Champlain Telephone Company, it says phone for twenty-nine dollars, I don't know what that is.
There wasn't anything to tell me what it was for, exactly, so I bought the reminder when I went to call.
I need, need to see the bill.
What about the call, what about the call?
The reason what, what I'm getting at is, is that obviously every phone line has a, a basic service charge, and then obviously calls made from here for parts, and I mean, no doubt we're calling wherever for whatever. And, and this is something I'm willing to check out, if, if somebody's in agreement with me here, but I, I think the, the dollar amount that it totals, you know, we're over five hundred dollars in a month, and, and most of it is, is services, I mean, I don't have a problem with, with checking this out and saying, geez, can we, you can have one phone line with three extensions, if nobody's on these phones, in other words, you don't have to have a complete private line for this, you can have an off-line, I forget the technical term they use for this, you have one phone bill, but you can have a phone here, and you can have one at your house, okay? Two different locations, one bill, and it's like a, a minimum charge, but not the amount of, of another phone, phone line, whatever, a phone service for a very minimal rate. You know, am I looking to chip pennies? No. Is it feasible? Possibly, I, I don't know this, but do we actually need to pay a complete phone service for a lift station, whatever? Coincidentally, could you have a lift station alarm go off at the same time as a pump alarm? Probably, but something's gonna go off. Some, somebody, somebody's gonna use that line first, you see what I mean? Do we, this is my question, and this is put out to the board, open for suggestions, or whatever. It just seems like five, over five hundred dollars a month is a lot of money for this many phones.
I don't think it's, I'd have a problem, or I'm sure the rest of Portland, as far as somebody taking a look at this, because periodically, those type of things should be evaluated. Because over the years, you know, Audrey, we need a, we need a phone here, we need a phone there, and they get added.
Right.
Is it the most efficient and less, or most costly or least costly way of doing things? Not necessarily, so it takes, I mean, someone to look at the overall picture, and, and maybe come up with something that is more feasible and economic, you know, more economic to.
No, it's, I'm trying, as far as like, uh, the alarms, I hadn't really considered that. But you could probably put all three of them, they all identify each themselves.
Right.
If you, if you have the wastewater plant, it identifies itself by the phone number.
Right.
So you can, but you can use anything you want, you can say main lift station, you can say.
Whatever.
Whatever you want, you'll, you'll have a mechanical voice that will say that, so, yeah, that's.
I'm just looking to consolidate.
I understand what you're doing.
May I volunteer to look into that, because I'm gonna be doing that in the first place regarding the telemetry services, plus Warner Cable has a security system down there.
Absolutely, you don't like, because you're gonna pay for it.
We don't pay for that, you know, okay, well, maybe we'll get them, give us everything for it.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I just hope, because it's all gonna fall in the same.
If, if it fits into your, I, I know coming on board, there's probably a lot of stuff you're trying to get ahold of, if you feel you wanna take that.
That's an understatement, but no.
Well, Joe's been lead man on the whole thing on the, all that telemetry.
Oh, right, right.
The stuff that we've had go wacky on.
One thing I would say, like, for the office though, and the justice court.
No, that has to be separated.
Uh, right, but we, those bills are higher because our computer system is on the bills also, just so you'll know that.
Computer system, meaning what?
We have DSL through the phone company.
High-speed internet, which has a flat rate done, no matter how much you use it.
Thirty-nine ninety-nine.
Thirty-nine ninety-nine.
I'm not, I don't know the exact.
If it isn't, we got the wrong plan. I mean, anybody can get DSL high-speed internet for forty bucks a month, flat rate, no matter if you.
You got a website.
We got four computers, so whether it's thirty-nine ninety-nine, it doesn't matter how many you have.
Doesn't matter.
No, no, it doesn't make any difference.
No, but in my home with no other calls, it's seventy-five dollars a month to have a telephone and DSL. And I make no long-distance calls from my house, or no local toll calls.
Would you like me to look into your phone service?
Please, mine, I think mine is more than that.
Well, the next thing is, is with Time Warner coming through our village, this is just, I'm just gonna touch on this, Joe, because, and I'm not sure how this works, well.
I looked into it today personally, more money.
But hold on here, we, we are a municipality, they are happy to come through our village to make their connections to the roots. What feasibility is there in using Time Warner high-speed internet, leaving the phone line free for a private line for the mayor's office, or a private line to call out if your two lines are busy? I, you see what I'm getting at?
Your service for you, because that's a part of the overall plan I'm looking at is, well, how can we combine some of these services? Do you have cable and phone service?
Upgrade our, let's get up to, we have these things at our fingertips, let's just take them and.
If we have cable service provided to the municipality, then we should be using that.
And it may not be feasible, I'm, I'm not sure, but it's just something I'm, I'm thinking, you'll free up the phone line, and now you're on high-speed internet cable, so what?
Okay, take a little time, but I'll, I'll jump into it.
Seventy-nine ninety-five.
Is that because of the website?
Internet, oh my.
It might be because we're a municipality and not a residence too.
Or you're dealt with like a business, rather than.
It's a business fee.
Yeah.
Forty dollars, two more.
Could be a business.
I, I think since, you know.
Can we go into a charity organization?
Well, my point is, is with, with a cable company, with Time Warner, we have a very good relationship with them, matter of fact, they give us cable service here, no charge, I'm not sure what the possibilities are of getting that accomplished. Do you see anything with that, Bob, I mean, you're kind of up to speed or familiar with the, you deal with the cable people here all the time?
I deal with them, they put in our, uh, the alarm systems.
Right.
And that's, that was done as part of the deal.
Into the village.
Yes.
So we have that alarm system.
How many years has that been in?
This question is yours now.
It depends when the relicensing comes up.
You see, you see, you see our talk about?
So Time Warner has a contract with the village Champlain to provide service through the village?
That's correct.
To provide.
So licensed.
And it's a contract with expiration dates?
Yes.
Okay, that has to be renewed.
Yes.
And under that existing contract, they furnished us with certain things.
Right, security down there.
Right, and cable hearing, yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Which they have high-speed internet, so I'm not sure what. Okay.
It's one of those new, new adventures.
Yes, very good. Um, another question, Christmas decorations in northern forest, what, what did we do?
They're not up yet. They're all back.
Okay, a tree and wreaths.
Yeah.
Trees and.
They came, they came Friday night.
No, they were all a hundred bucks, they're a hundred bucks either. There's a couple old bills there, they've been set aside vouchers, and I'm glad they went all the way up there. What is for summer flowers?
We're looking at four hundred and seventy-six total, I was looking at just the Christmas stuff of a hundred and sixty-three.
I circled that stuff as well.
There's two summer flowers, two Christmas decorations, they're back, and they're at the end of the day, they're, they're sent them voucher back, and it's like this.
When we get stuff from northern appliance, or northern forest, do they give us an invoice or a slip, and then send us a statement?
Yeah.
So we don't pay off?
Send the statement back, have the cash, the blue voucher.
And then you don't, then send it back. So what you're saying is the sixty-three dollars from last year?
Mm-hmm, two, two, one flower and one Christmas, this was obviously last year. And then one flower this summer, and one Christmas decorations.
Can we do the cheaper route, and then go retail?
We gotta shop a little bit, yeah, we gotta shop.
And what about the place I go across the border?
We get four, four.
Across the border? Or I go across twice a year.
And a tree for a hundred and five bucks.
You get four wreaths and a.
Four wreaths and a tree, usually.
Good place, tree, and they deliver it.
Those flowers are the flower boxes that we put all around the village.
Right, I understand that.
Oh yeah, you got summer flowers at a hundred and four, and summer flowers a hundred and sixty-nine, then we got Christmas decorations at a hundred, and then a, a, an old bill for sixty-three, that's four hundred and seventy-six dollars ninety cents.
Two years.
For flowers, community beautification.
Three years.
Christmas decorations.
This is for two years?
Yeah.
How do you figure two years?
When you get the second, second one of the flowers, I believe that's the second year.
You get two summer flowers, and you got two Christmas decorations.
Yeah, that's two years.
So you got a hundred and four, a hundred and sixty-nine, did they raise the price this year, or was it last year, did they lower the price this year?
We had more.
We had more.
Got more. Depends what you get for flowers. They also plant them for that.
That would probably be.
They come here, put them in our planters?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought she planted that.
I think Larry planted them this year.
I thought we did.
Probably the hundred and sixty-nine the year before.
Okay.
I know Larry and Jimmy planted them this year.
Okay. Not, okay, didn't most fly, use it, at the time, but.
I'm just trying to get educated on this stuff. It looks like the guys went down and got some stuff from a country apartment family there.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going with the uniforms? Because that's what, I circled that too, we spent this money just now, and we're going with uniforms.
Well, no. The budget, we figured this out last time, I was kind of cut off where the budget starts in June. It's already been initiated, so, but everything's in place for.
Everything's in place for June.
Uh, Townham Moore's dog control, I haven't seen an invoice or a statement from him, we talked about this, we're not gonna pay him anymore until we get some kind of a activity report, statement, whatever.
We did get.
Well, he sent us a bill apparently for seven hundred and fifty dollars for September, October, November.
He hasn't sent the bill, we just sent him a check quarterly.
No, we're not doing that, though, remember, we talked about that.
I didn't know, really, you wanted to send me a quarterly.
Whenever, whenever we write him a check, I wanna see a bill for it, we're not just gonna, we did, we talked about this before.
Yeah, you, you want to.
We're not just writing checks because we think we owe some.
Quarterly report, just like we were sending a check quarterly, so we know what the activity was.
And what we asked, we had stopped payment back last summer until we got a report, he gave us a report that said, yeah, what we did and whatever. But we owe him another seven hundred and fifty dollars, I wanna see what he's done from the last bill to this bill, that we paid quarterly, fine. Seven hundred and fifty dollars, we all agreed, we'll pay him, but let's get a report and see what happened in these last three months. Yes, absolutely, because we stated that to him, and we made it clear to him. If we're just gonna let it slide, then in no sense, we wasted a lot of time on this before already. Let's, you know, let's just write him a check for the year and be done with it, we don't have to look at this every three months. We don't send them, we're not gonna pay a bill unless we got an invoice, I don't do it in my business, and I don't think any one of us here go home and say, well, let's just write a check to Nysig in case they send me a bill, in case they send me power. No, we, we talked about this, you know, we shouldn't be doing this.
So the only time we sent a check out without actual invoice is when we have a contract. We did have a contract with him.
But the contract, we had asked him to send us a statement. So if we can get a statement or some kind of a, whatever he wants to do, you know? Um, anyways, Champlain Telephone Company talked about that. Okay, I think that's it, on my, my end.
Are you done, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric.
Oh, no, I'm not done, I'm sorry, jeez, the, the whole point of this thing, uh, employees' insurance, um, we had an executive session, spoke about insurance and stuff. Um, I brought it to the guys, um, early one morning, I tried to do it where I'd catch them all, so we could talk about it, and we did. Um, they brought to my attention, um, alternate.
Alternative in the jocks, right?
Yeah, alternative B, um, and matter of fact, I believe in our correspondents, there's a letter from them, from here somewhere.
Stating that they want to go to alternative B.
A letter, uh, from the village employees and, uh, I guess I ought to say former superintendent.
I tended to, I tended to agree with. That's what they want. That's what they want.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I don't have any qualms with it, I just, I'm bringing it to the board to, uh, like I said, I, I, I told them I would. Uh, they'd like to change their option to, uh, the ten, twenty, forty, uh, drug card.
Right.
Situation.
And a twenty dollar copay.
And a twenty dollar copay, yes, you're correct.
Right, instead of a ten dollar copay.
Yep.
Yeah, the letter states, so, and I think that we go with, uh, alternative B, it will be within our.
Still more money.
It's more money, yeah, still more money.
How much?
I got Chuck's calculator here.
I think last year it went from seven sixty-four to seven seventy-eight, which is fourteen dollars for the family.
And then if you look at the ring.
Fourteen dollars and eighteen cents.
You're right.
It's still, it's still increased.
It's increased by fourteen dollars and eighteen cents.
Fourteen dollars and eighteen cents, and I think with the, with the current, with renewal, if we went into that renewal on the single, it went from, uh, say, two ninety-four to two ninety-nine, it went up five dollars.
Three dollars or something.
Right. So, we're talking at a fourteen dollar a month on a family and a five dollar a month on, on a, on a single. Going, an increase going to alternative, uh, B.
A month. Is that a month or a week? Is that a month or a week?
A month.
A month. I mean, my thing is, if they, if they opt to go with alternative B, which irregardless is they're gonna have more out of pocket expense anyways. They're either gonna pay it here or they're gonna pay it there, it's still gonna be out of their pocket, their material.
So what, what it's coming, what it boils down to, for a single insurer, increase per week, it's gonna, it's an extra dollar twenty-six a week.
Dollar twenty-six cents a week.
A week.
A week.
For the family plan, it's three twenty-seven a week additional. All right, so you're, so you're looking at, uh, I don't think the totals are smart, but.
Am I going to do it?
This year. I can't remember exactly where it's, but I, I wrote it somewhere.
Thirty seventy for family a year.
Would it go by the month or by, do they do it by the week or? Is it twelve months or is it fifty-two weeks?
Fifty-two weeks.
It's a fifty, they do it monthly, the billing comes monthly.
The bill monthly, yeah.
So you wouldn't do that a week, you'd times twelve.
I, I was just trying to break it down so we could get a better perspective on it per week as compared to by month.
Hundred and seventy dollars and sixteen cents, well, that's using alternative B, per employee, per year, right?
Right.
Now, we can divide that by fifty-two. To look at, uh.
I think we're talking pennies here, people.
Oh yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I think if they wanna go with.
Three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I think if they wanna.
Earlier.
They wanna go with alternative B, which, uh, I can't foresee a great big increase.
Well, we're still, it's an increase in our budget.
I think, I think we can initially, I think we can initially absorb it.
Uh, well, the number, the number it'll cost you in a budget year is one seventy times, how many? How many, how many people have a family plan?
Five.
I think Ronnie's single.
In what?
So it'll be four, all five.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna be happy.
You're, well, at this point, we're talking, you're still in it, it's affecting you.
It will affect me when, when I, the first, in the year, I pick up the whole thing.
He's going over us, it won't cost us.
It's going to cost us.
It's, it's.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars plus Ronnie's, whatever Ronnie's on a single.
Yeah, that's.
Anybody with a family plan, if there's five people on a family plan, your added cost per year is eight hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents per year. Now, I kinda agree with Albert, I, I don't see where we could take such a sting on, on absorbing that, however, you know, what I think we should do, okay, this is my own opinion, and if there's something I'm missing here, somebody please tell me. Let's run this by the employees, say, okay, you know, this is gonna cost us this, we're probably able to absorb this, but we have to keep in mind what's more important, your yearly raise or your insurance, because, yeah, I mean, it's a thousand dollars and we can absorb it, but how much can we absorb, because, you see what I'm saying?
Insurance is go up every year, that's a guarantee.
Right.
Guarantee they're gonna go up every year.
Every year.
Um, the decision if they're gonna change policies, this has to be it by tomorrow. All right, that's what he told me, I told you the night.
I talked to him, uh.
He told me the night that we're gonna change our, uh, what, what plan we're going with, when I met with him.
I didn't get that impression today, but he did say, I talked to you, I told him we had a meeting tonight, uh, here in town, that was that. I thought he said people in February, which I didn't understand, because it always says the first.
Well, I, I think if we wanna have it effective as of the first of the year, he needs to have it by tomorrow. He did mention that you can change plans within the year, and we were told differently than this before.
You can't change, once you initially, once.
He told me to do that.
Yes, he did say that.
But I'm going out with a single on the family, I mean, it's just like, if you're riding a horse on a ring street, um, it's crazy.
Cause usually when you, when you attack your insurance, it's usually on a yearly premium.
Exactly.
You know, it goes from January one to December thirty-first, it goes to that, that pay period year.
That's when the rate is set for the following year.
Usually any changes have to be made by November prior to January.
Prior to January.
Well, actually, it's December.
We're going, yeah.
I was told December, that they decided to change plans, which is, is a change in the plan.
That makes sense.
They had to be in by tomorrow.
Well, I think if we're looking at a deadline, okay, we got new rules to play by, what we should do, they're in agreeance that whatever extra cost it is, they'd rather stay with, with plan B than at this point until, the insurance company doesn't care who's paying, as long as they get their money. Our concern is, is are we gonna absorb eight hundred and fifty dollars a year or give that to them as a pat in the back, thank you very much for being employees, and then, you know, think about this at raise time, I mean, we're, you know, I'm trying to be right up front and fair with everybody here. If they need to know, and we know that they've all opted based on my conversations with the, with the people and a letter from them, and they need to know by tomorrow, then let's do it under alternative B, everybody seems to want that, regardless of the dollar amount, then we're, we're gonna decide right now, they know that they're gonna have to pay something, and that's fine, if we opt not to, if they do pay something, it's, it's three dollars and twenty-seven cents a week. Far ahead of the twenty-five bucks that we were originally talking about. So if they need an answer tomorrow, obviously, we don't have time to get off these people here and.
Oh, no, well, alternative B.
Go alternative B, case closed.
Well, that's what they want.
That's what they want, right.
They've all signed it, that's what they want.
But I mean, you, we have to remember here, in all fairness, and not to take sides, it doesn't care what they want, it's what we are giving them. Insurance works that way with every single company, and I'm glad to give it to them, and I'm sure everybody else here is too, but let's keep in mind, this is a gift as part of their benefits. We don't have to give them A, B, C, or D, we can tell them that's what you're getting, that's it.
I was reminded that today at work, same exact thing.
Were you?
This is something that the company gives you.
Gives you, that's right, this is a perk, that's all, that's all.
Well, and what we could do too, if it's a concern, because obviously, insurance costs are prohibitively expensive and continually rising astronomically. If we set a procedure that if, you know, the annual cost is over seven hundred and fifty dollars a year to us, and we put that into our budget, then that additional amount will be spread out to the employees to pay the difference, or whatever the base is. We automatically will give them that amount of a perk in the increase in insurance, and we should plan on that in our budget, because reality is, it's there.
We need to, right, that's cost of living.
Right.
Cost of living, your health insurance goes up like the price of gasoline or loaf of bread.
Right.
That's cost of living comes in with a cost of living raise, if we're gonna do our raises and insurance, and it's kinda like a double indemnity here. I wanna see these guys with good insurance, no doubt, if they opt to take plan B, then that's fine, if we're gonna spend eight hundred and fifty dollars a year for five of the guys, then so be it, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that, but we have to keep in mind, how far are we gonna go with this? Are we gonna use this come raise time, I mean, what is more important to them, our raise or their benefits, see my point? If, if we ask them, th- th- then they'll tell us, jeez, you know, we have to do something, they know that, I, I sat here and talked with them, they understand, we're, we have to do something. We can only eat this stuff for so long.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we set a thing, they deserve to have insurance and they deserve to have a pay increase, it's two separate things. Any employer you poll in the entire world is going to say that, and yes, it's time that they start to absorb a portion of that, so we just say, if it becomes to this point, you know, obviously, we're gonna budget in X number of dollars every year as an increase, if it's above that, then you as an employee will absorb the difference in that.
I think that's what we tried to do now.
Right, when we budget every year for a yearly raise of, of, let's just use a, a guess of five percent. So we already budgeted five percent for increase in wages for cost of living, and then we, we say, okay, if it, three percent of that five came into insurance, that's a raise, that's, that's money they're not taking out of their check to pay for, then they get a two percent raise that year, or, this is what I'm getting at.
And how do their raises work? Are they reviewed on a scale of one, two, and three, and they get, you know, ten cents if they're a one, fifty cents if two, a dollar if they're three, is that how you guys work, or is it just a flat increase?
Percentage.
Just a flat percentage, everybody equal?
Usually we try to do.
Well, then we should probably look at that, because you should really.
That's not the way it originally was supposed to be known, but that's because the evaluation's worked on the previous year or two, that's the way it was.
Right.
Evaluation, every, pay raises should be based on merit, not just a plain old cost of living, it should be based on merit.
Merit.
Exactly.
I agree.
Let's get with the real world here.
Exactly.
Uh, just, uh, something to think about, we're talking about nine hundred or eight hundred dollars a year addition for the, uh, health insurance, you're not really talking, you're only talking from January to May to be ten dollars a month, because of the budget. So you don't have nine hundred dollars for a whole year, it's your budget, so you have to do your budget for that, so it's not really nine hundred dollars.
But it still is for, you know, from the, the calendar year, it's still gonna be that much, because.
That's the more, the cost of bill.
We'll get to our budget year and we'll say, well, we need to put this much more on the budget for health insurance, and we'll still be paying for it as compared to subsidize even a small, small portion by the employees.
But my point is, you're not talking a whole year down, you're only talking six months, or January, February.
Well, in this budget year, yeah.
Re-budget, that's when your budget's done, you start again.
Yeah, but you can't go that way, because they'll, these people are gonna change it the first of the year, so if you budget it in June, fine, you can budget for an estimated.
At that point, you wouldn't.
You would have to go, you just run your clock the different way.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, this cost is no matter what you do with a budget for the rest of the year, yeah, we can budget in the cost, cover our haircuts if we want, but is, is it the right thing to do? You can't, you can't do that.
Well, I definitely think insurance is the right thing to do, because a lot of people opt to not take insurance, and I don't think I personally went right on the head that someone wasn't able to afford it, so.
The problem here is, these guys, we've been able to pay for their insurance as a benefit, you know, and, and that's a good thing, because anytime you can do that, it's, it's good. Our costs are just going up, so, how do you do it, how do you do it?
So they need to absorb a small.
So I would say, if you need an answer about it, are you handling this, Chuck, do I understand you're?
I don't know, who would actually call them and change the policy?
He just, oh, we just, I'm sorry, would we need to change the policy?
Change, change the, the actual.
Alternative B to alternative B.
Yeah, just make a motion to change it to the other plan, or pull out the paperwork and send it in, and then at some point, decide what's wrong with it, about the, the, the premium.
Right.
Be something now, be something in June, get through the law, they gave, you gave.
Right. So I think we need, I think we need a motion right now to go to, uh, our insurance cover, alternative B HMO, Blue Castle.
Think we need a motion to go to that, and how are we going to handle it, or are we gonna decide that later?
We're gonna decide that later, we actually are gonna go to that insurance, we wanna go.
Yep.
And I think, I think we can handle that at a later date, the, the small amount of premium increase.
May I ask one question, I, I don't know anything about this policy.
Right.
Besides the copays, is the insurance coverage overall the same?
Yes.
Uh, not usually, in this particular one, I think it is.
Well, the drug, the drug card coverage is, is more.
There's more.
You're paying more money.
Well, I, I mean, just the long-term benefits of the coverage, I mean, guy has a heart attack, does he, does he max out at a hundred thousand or two hundred fifty thousand or?
No, no, it's the same.
All that's the same, I'm just curious.
These comparisons, somebody's read the book, it's an inch thick and compared it, these three comparisons to what we have existing.
That's what's making the difference, they're showing you what's making the difference.
But there doesn't, there's, what I'm saying is, there's not three insurance policies in there, this, this is kinda like a rate chart form that gives you a parameter. This isn't an insurance policy, I mean, those are an inch thick, is, is what I'm getting at.
No, we weren't, we weren't supplied with that.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the, the, this health group insurance, or whoever this, who was this prepared by? Burnham Financial Service took that one inch thick and this one inch thick and bred them, and said, these are the three that are about the same information, same benefits, and this is, on an average, what will change. Did, did you call these people, who did this, who, who got all these people?
They do this every year, every year they send us a packet.
These people.
And I sat down with them and discussed, we had this discussion, and I talked to these people.
I see.
And what the board at that time said was, well, you don't wanna take any coverage away from them. We'll stay with the same policy in the plan and charge them X number, the employees X number of dollars per paper. Well, the employee said they'd rather go with this.
Right.
Which isn't as much of an increase.
Right.
But they're gonna pay it out of pocket when they go to the doctors.
They'll pay more out of pocket on a gradual basis rather than a hundred bucks a month.
Right.
And like you said, you know, this is a decision that really we make, but if this is what they want and, and we're agreeable, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
But they're gonna need to know too, how much they're gonna pay, because.
Already, the decision has been made, there's a little bit of misunderstanding here, that, I tried to make it clear to them the other day, and I think they understand it. We could take this and toss it in the garden and say, I'm sorry, you don't have any insurance at all, they have to understand this, this is a benefit, there's no law, there's nothing that says, they can quit their job too. So I wanna keep this in here for that reason, I let them clear to know that, this is, there's nobody says we have to furnish, there's nothing in their bylaws, nothing in anything. They already know, I'm hoping they understand, we made a decision in an executive session that it would be whatever it was we originally talked about. They came up with this other plan, and I'm glad, if I can help them and if that's what they want, I'm glad to work with them. So now that we're down to three dollars and twenty-seven cents a week, whether they need to pay it or we absorb it, I'm sure it would be less of an issue than the twenty-five dollars a week that's already been decided on as a board, you see my point? I mean, I don't wanna sound like God or a ruler over these guys, because I, I don't wanna be that way, but that's a fact, that's the real world. We could've decided on that, threw this away and said, I'm sorry, we don't care what you have, this is what you're getting, but I'm glad that, I mean, if we can work with them, I can't see where the three dollars and, uh, twenty-seven cents a week is gonna be a problem, maybe we can absorb this, and I hope we can. But to make the decision now, yes, I think like Albert said, make a motion, we're going with this, if there's a deadline, get that in, if we end up having to charge them three dollars and twenty-seven cents a week, I don't think they'll have a problem, if they do, we can say, geez, you know what, you don't need insurance at all. I mean, how far are we gonna dig this into the ground?
Because this is their option, this is what they want, this is what they want.
Albert took six months ago and already made them aware that you might have to pay something. I met with them the other morning, and they were all, I mean, flustered, and I don't blame them a bit, I would be too, but they have to understand where we're coming from. We could throw this away and say, you're not getting any insurance, that's the way it is.
We're going after, we're going after requests.
That's right.
This is what we're gonna do, we're gonna make a motion to have this changed to alternative B. Now, whatever this might be, an extra cost, if we feel they need to absorb three dollars or four dollars a week, they're gonna absorb four dollars a week, because this is what they want.
And if we decide that we can absorb it, then we'll absorb it.
Right.
And make a motion that we accept the alternative B insurance.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it.
Phew.
Thank you. This horse, this horse ain't even got a saddle anymore, it's beat so bad. Uh, anything else, man?
Uh, that'll do it for me.
Okay. Clerk treasure?
I again have my report of revenues and expenditures. Um, I'd like you to note that this is as of end of November, which is six months into our year.
Right.
Um, rather than, uh, if you each account, if you, when you look at this report, if you look at the last column, especially under expenditures, it shows a percentage remaining. You can see how we're running on target, on some, and some we aren't.
Well, that's normal.
Seems to be balancing out, though.
Well, that's normal for some to be high, some to be low.
Right.
As long as, uh...
Right.
Because they're the equal office.
It's a joke again.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. Any questions for, uh, Mrs. Dawson on her report? Okay, then. We're gonna go on to, and the last time.
It's looking nice.
Superintendent Sullivan. Oh, I can't wait. Okay.
Yeah, I read your report.
Right, and I read your report. Okay. My thing here, choose activities. When we were losing a hundred and thirty thousand gallons, and I was having a conversation with you, I didn't notice somebody was filling their fire pong. You never got back, you never got back to me on that.
Well, shouldn't we know about that?
Yeah, we had a, we had a...
We should've known about that.
There was a discussion about that.
Amongst who?
Myself and the owner.
They just went ahead and did it?
Yeah.
Do we charge them for that water?
Oh, yes. Oh, you, they're paying for it. Oh, yeah.
But what...
I just wanna know when it's happening, because I'm looking for, why are we losing a hundred and thirty thousand gallons?
How do you know it's a hundred and thirty thousand?
Well, it's actually a hundred and forty-four thousand.
How do you know it's a hundred and forty-four?
I'm gonna pull a meter.
Oh, I didn't know they had a meter.
What?
I thought, 'cause I was told this came from a hydro.
No.
Okay. But then I said it was a hydra.
See, the only thing that I question about that is, Chuck, is if they're gonna do this, we as a municipality need to know that they're gonna be drawing this much water, because we were thought that we had a bust in Maine.
We, I was going crazy.
Right, and I'm saying to myself, you know, we need, we need to know this upfront if anybody is gonna do this, so we ourself can be prepared for this.
Is, is Dory Kirks aware of this?
No.
Could she be made aware of this?
She can be, it's not gonna do her any good. It's, the contractor is who I informed, and the, the engineer. They're somebody we will do business with again.
Right. But I mean, she's in charge of industrial park, so I just thought that she's...
She's in charge of industrial park, but the people who, she doesn't have her hands on day to day.
Right.
It's not something she would be dealing with. I dealt with the people who were doing it.
Thanks, Dan.
Yes.
Okay, so our mag meter and stuff, I know that, I believe Joe has been working on it, you yourself been working on it. Uh, we had a steam plant system in here before. Now, this concern is Industrial Instrumentation Corporation, this is how this connected it?
Mm-hmm.
Uh...
Joe had some other questions of them today.
Who was in, somebody was in today?
No, he had other questions of them today, and he's better off explaining it than I am.
We sent them requests last week to revise that open-ended proposal, because it's, uh, it's not workable. We have no idea what it's gonna cost.
Right.
Which one you referring to, steam plant?
No, no, the location, uh...
The industrial instrumentation.
Yeah, industrial instrumentation.
Right.
So I, I faxed him some information last Wednesday, and he was supposed to, uh, FX the revised proposal this morning, which we have not received yet.
In other words, get a more...
Nailed down.
Nail down price per se.
Something the board can...
Right.
Say, here's our hard number.
Okay.
And go or no go.
He was hoping to have it quoted tonight, but it didn't work.
Okay. Uh, because I know I've had brief conversations with Bob on this. Uh, seems like I'm always having a lot of conversations with Bob. Welcome, Burge, I'll be doing the same thing with you. Uh, yeah, because we do, you know, it's very important for us knowing our water flows, knowing what we're having, and keeping a tab on this, and, uh... Now, it's turning in, it's gonna be left into your hands now, apparently, because I've, nothing, I don't think will be installed before Mr. Sullivan leaves, so... What is happening is, we're having problems that, for people that don't know, that, uh, our tower, our water tower. Uh, Rainey's been working on it, uh, Joe's been working on it. Uh, we've been having problems with our, our telemetry and our levels, our flow levels and what have you. And this whole system all works with that. This is why initially, we had steam, steam plant systems come up, and, uh, apparently, it was not a very eventful fix, from what I can gather. The information I have collected is, is not what I wanna hear. Okay? Uh, so, and being that the problem has come up again, and now our mag meter is gone, um, we've got hold of another concern, which is into calibration and what have you. And this is this industrial instrumentation covered. Uh, what Joe was just saying is, this is very vague. We are looking to say, okay, um, are we gonna put a fifteen hundred dollar price tag, a two thousand dollar price tag, a three thousand dollar price tag? We're trying to get some more numbers. This is very vague, but, but what they're saying here. We need to have that system up and running. We need to know our flow rates, 'cause that helps us with our flow rates, as well as our gallon juices and what I do. Um, it's very important to the village. So I brought that up to try to bring everybody that doesn't know...
Up to speed.
Up to speed where we are with this right now. Uh, some of the people haven't been around, and they, and, you know, I just wanna make sure that why they got this information is, this is the reason why it's in their box. Yes.
Another question, uh, did we ever receive back?
No.
We never got it back from Steam Plant? We have not paid Steam Plant.
They won't get it, they won't get it done until they, they do something.
Right. We talked about this before, and I just wanna make sure that...
I'm not gonna keep chasing them.
No, they did say they would send it.
Yeah. Well, you had the conversation, didn't you? Yeah, all right.
Have, have we been in touch with them since?
No. I'm not gonna chase that one.
Well, no, I mean, we're not chasing. I mean, we, we should probably make a follow-up call and say, geez, what's, you know, I mean, we can't just leave them hanging, maybe the guy forgot, who set it aside, who knows? I mean, nothing happens. Just to be fair, yeah, follow-up call, uh, I guess that'd be... The guy who's writing over there.
The guy who's writing.
Just to say, geez, you know, we're still waiting to receive these, uh, parts that...
Well, we don't, Bob's not allowed, allowed to write anything more, okay?
I hope your writing is more legible than Bob's.
Um, the second time around, yes. If I'm writing while I'm walking, don't even try to read it.
That's kind of a vital piece of the puzzle.
Anybody else have any concerns for Mr. Sullivan this evening?
Well, the one I have is what you already discussed.
Right, okay. But that was, that was the one that I know, I was, uh, I talked to him a couple of days, and he was actually nervous. And I said, well, we need to do something with that. But then, then a follow-up never happened, or I, I, I slipped up or what have you. And I mean, I'm just, have to make a mistake as anybody, so...
I copied you a little, little thing about MTV.
Yes.
And there's letters there that have two different kind of... If our, if our senators and whatever, how they voted. I, I don't know how they voted, so, at any rate, uh, this is, this is really could be a nightmare.
Yeah.
If this, the way they're hiding, they're trying to cover for the, uh, for the fuel companies is in such a way, if, if they pollute your water, you're in trouble. 'Cause they're not gonna pay for it, they're not gonna clean it up.
So what they're trying to do is...
And MTV goes directly into the groundwater.
Right. So what they're trying to do is, they're trying to take the liability off the fuel companies and put it into the general municipalities, you know?
We can't afford it.
And we can't afford that. So what it's saying, and here's a notification, is that, uh...
You don't worry about it.
And there's, and there's a letter in here, there's a generic to the editor.
You've got, you've got a little time, because this won't be acted on now until after the first of the year.
Right. But I think when, when we read this, we need to get hold of our senators and what have you, and, and voice our opinion as, as, as a village municipality. 'Cause I read this. But that again, the letters to the editor. See what happens is, they, they're trying to put, uh, they're trying to take the liability off of an organization and put it down to us poor old people. Is there anything else, Mrs. Sullivan?
Well, we have a, I copied you with this thing from Champlain-Peterbilt.
Right, now that's on our ninety-two?
Yes.
Uh... And that's an estimate?
That's an estimate.
Right.
Pretty sticky.
Uh, that runs around about three thousand dollars?
That's right.
Okay. And I'm sure that we cannot buy a truck for three thousand dollars.
What, uh, is one of here saying?
Yeah, Champlain-Peterbilt.
Looks like this.
Yeah.
I guess, what, what needs to be done to our sewer jet to bring that up?
That one also, that needs some exhaust work and some air, airbrush work. This is a different...
I know, I know.
They're both, they're both.
Because you didn't have an estimate, time to get the estimate together to the other one.
So, so what are you saying to us, Robert? Uh, or are you telling us that that needs to be done, and we're gonna do it? Or do you want our blessing?
Want your blessing.
Want our blessing. Well, the thing of it is...
Is this truck inspected every year?
Yes.
Yes.
So what happened in the last year to happen? I mean, or was it just all close?
Ninety-two.
Well, no, no, no.
It's inspected every year. King pins and tire rod ends don't still go in a year, I mean, unless the truck's on the road every day.
It is.
It sits all winter pretty much, isn't it?
No.
Well, it doesn't necessarily...
It's on the road a lot.
It doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, probably last year at this time, um, it was probably not as noticeable as it is. They were probably saying, okay, probably within a year or so, you're gonna have to do this. Okay? Doesn't mean that it doesn't, it's not gonna pass.
Uh, I agree with your point.
Uh, because talking with one of the workers saying, well, it's gonna be a little more difficult, we don't wanna have anyone fuck around. Well, my thing is, uh, we need to fix it, so...
If we have a water main break, we always haul, that's what we use to haul all our spoils away.
Right.
When you move in snow, you move that one to move snow, it's always the one that gets that. So, it doesn't just set.
No, it doesn't just set. Well, uh, I, my opinion is, uh, we need the vehicle. It won't pass inspection. I myself wouldn't wanna drive it and be responsible for somebody that drove it, uh, if anything was to happen. So I think initially upfront, I think we need to have it repaired. I think we need a motion to state to that effect that Champlain-Peterbilt repair, our nineteen ninety-two International, and the cost stated on, on their, uh, their invoice.
That's a ninety-two?
Yes.
What's the value of that truck? The condition that it's in? I have, I don't know.
I, I don't think at this point it doesn't matter. I mean, we need the truck, we can't, we can't afford a lot of money at this point.
Uh, can't afford it, no one, and even if we wanted to trade it in, we'll take it.
Well, well, then...
It's, it's, it's unsafe anyways. And we as a municipality should make any vehicle that we have to, our operators to drive be as safe as can be. Reliability factor. So I'd like a motion to have this repaired.
With that motion.
Most of it, trustee short?
Second.
Second, trustee, uh, Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Mr. Sullivan. I mean, I'm gonna retire, and I hope I don't have to pay this bill on my retirement. It's gonna take a long time. Would there be anything else, anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
I don't think so.
Would there be anything for, uh, must, any other issues for Mr. Sullivan this evening?
Well, we got no dollars in there.
Well, that's our... So you're talking, that's our insurance coverage?
Yeah, I think so, why tomorrow?
Right. Because that's our new insurance coverage?
I'm making sure it's, uh...
What did it say? Forty-nine thousand, is it?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven? I remember reading that.
But it is a ninety-four.
That truck is insured?
Forty-seven. Replaced. Has it replaced? The place burns down, with that in it.
We would get that much money?
If it wasn't an accident on the road.
Hmm?
If it wasn't an accident on the road, what would be...
Be a whole different ball back.
Exactly.
Right.
You couldn't put it for sale, so I don't know, you have any idea, huh?
The sewer jet, look, they've got that value at...
What do you have at that?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, I went through all of those figures. I was impressed with some of those. And when I looked at the wastewater treatment, five hundred and forty thousand twice.
Well, those figures are probably more realistic, because some of the other figures are, are in the...
Okay, if nobody else has any more information or any question for Mr. Sullivan, I would like to move on to correspondence.
Item one is a hundred designation from Steven Bulman, which we've addressed. Item two is correspondence from the USDA regarding the possession of community forest ranch.[1640.94] grant. Item three is a two thousand and three need survey, a little verge group. Item four is correspondence from Time Warner Cable regarding irate increase. Item five is correspondence from Senator Schumer regarding the term of I.R.S. fund.
Too bad I didn't get that.
And item six is a better designation from Bob, which he addressed.
Would there be anything else? There are some correspondence I'd like to read and there are some I don't like. Old business. Number one is our steam plant system. We've had a brief discussion on that this evening. I think we need you ask, uh, Mr. Webb to follow up on that. Okay? We haven't done anything with our age exemption. I would like to be copied with that again for next month's meeting. Okay? Because I think, uh, we need to look at that. We put it on the back burner, but I think we need to look at it. All right. Uh, it went up from, I think that one was, it could make so much a year, it went up to so much a year, from twenty-one to twenty-four or something?
Yeah, twenty-one to twenty-three or something.
Or something like that.
Ours is, ours is at twenty thousand five hundred, and the maximum increase now to twenty-four thousand.
Well, it's hit to twenty-four thousand.
We'd have to change our logo on it.
We'd have to change our logo on it. And, uh, any information, like I said, I'll be with you, and I'd like to go over that and see what that, that would actually cost, uh, cost taxes.
We would have no way of knowing.
We really have no way of knowing.
No, you'd know it, knowing how many, obviously, you have in the bill, and what the salary is.
Right. It's an issue. Uh, I believe that we need to, to do it anyways. Uh, okay. Thank you. That will come up in January. Uh, any, uh, number three, Parker Brothers Water and Shore, have we got any plans back from them yet?
No, he was at school last week.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't get to it, so...
Did we get that from the town or from?
From the town.
That should be from the town, because we're the ones that set that up. Okay, number four, Elba Street Speed Signs. We have that for public hearing for January. January twelfth, if we need fifteen, seven a.m., I mean, seven p.m., yeah, seven p.m., excuse me. And our purchase policy. We'll put that way on the back burner. Would there be any new business to come before the board this evening? If not, I would like a motion to go into executive session.
Uh, sorry, we just had a note coming back, so this is the, uh, the, uh, the null form last of all, so it's gonna be for the board and authorization for either you or Bob to sign it. I think we, I don't know, unless someone doesn't agree with this.
Why, I think, uh, I think they'll sign it as well.
Has it, did it go up? Is this compared to last year? Is this?
Well, he says he increased their coverage.
Increased our coverage, but what is our cost? Would that go up too?
I'm sure it's, uh-
All in charge, go ahead.
So the question is to, to, give us a cost on this?
Should we fix that?
The question is just to review it, see if the figures look-
Should we correct that from a ninety-three to a ninety-two?
I did, I just probably just didn't sign. Um, just say, boy, it looks correct, let's see if I can get it back for, uh, how it can be rewritten after January first, this morning.
So this is just a spec sheet?
Yeah, just a spec sheet. We will sign that.
It's a basic statement of values of our-
Right, it's a basic statement of values.
So they have to-
Yeah, it looks correct, we're leaving it on.
So do we need a motion?
Tractor that we got, is that on there? Because I don't know what's old and what's not, but I did just purchase a new tractor, right?
Let's see if it was on there or not.
He didn't say it.
No.
We'll just get to go over it closer.
International dump, that tractor, that's ninety-two.
No.
No, it's two thousand.
Maybe a Ford also.
Two thousand international dump.
No, it's not.
So do you wanna add that on?
And if you, you know, is there anything that sounded that should be that we don't have any on?
We'll go over it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will be-
Because you know more about what we have for it than probably the rest of the board does.
Good.
That's true.
Mr. Webb and I will do a walk around.
If you got, you know, something back there that we have, but we don't use because it's not functioning-
So we need a-
What's against a snowmore?
It's, oh, that's down the wastewater plant.
It's a walking hood?
Mm-hmm.
So do we need a motion for that, uh, reviewing or what?
We should, we should state the minutes of the document, yeah. Authorize the, I guess, all the signs.
Right.
Are we gonna add that four tractor to this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna add the four tractor to it.
Should've been, actually, it should've been added to our insurance when we bought it.
Right.
That should be an automatic thing.
So could I have a motion to have the corrections made?
So long.
On that paper to add? And have Robert have the, motion trustee Connor? Second trustee Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, could I have a motion to go into-
Make a motion, we move to executive session.
Motion by, yeah, uh, Garrett, uh, taken in by trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
That's way too far ahead.